...conversations, but yeah, special study session for February 5th, 2014. Let's get this going. People have questions. Roll call, first.
Councilmember Whitmer?
Hill, but here.
Councilmember Lewis?
Here.
Councilmember W.
It's the excuse.
Vice Mayor DeGalea?
Here.
Mayor Weis?
Here.
So we'll take this opportunity to check on any public comments. No public comments, say none, closing of public comments, moving over to section number one, the study session, traffic calming measures on Selby Lane. Jeff?
This item is a result of city council discussion and direction under December 18th as we are in the intersection of Selby and Alquimino Real. At the December staff meeting, or at the December meeting, staff was asking council for direction regarding the potential placement of a traffic signal or a hybrid pedestrian beacon at this intersection. Due to its accident history over the past 10 years, the intersection of Selby and Alquimino Real meets the criteria for a traffic signal. Caltrans has also programmed construction of a hybrid pedestrian beacon at this intersection as part of their crosswalk enhancement program for San Mateo and Solano County. This particular project is funded by Caltrans and construction is scheduled to begin in late 2016. As a result of comments from area residents and council discussion, city council asked Caltrans to review the feasibility of reducing left turn volumes at Selby and asked staff to review measures which will reduce volumes and speeds on Selby. In mid-January, I mailed to Caltrans to discuss the feasibility of reducing left turn lane volumes, and what I was told is that Caltrans said that the only effective ways of reducing left turn volumes was to impose time restrictions or to just eliminate the ability to perform left turns. And of course, these left turns were not reasonable since they would simply shift traffic to other nearby streets. Regarding Selby lanes, you know, staff, we do believe that reducing traffic volumes through traffic calming techniques would not be very effective, but we do believe that traffic calming is something we can look into to reduce vehicle speeds. An outline of a proposed traffic calming work plan is included in your staff report. And also wanted just to add that with regards to traffic calming, in addition to area residents, a key stakeholder in these discussions is always public safety from the standpoint of emergency response. And we've already had initial meeting with Menlo Park, and we learned that Selby is an emergency response route, which means that there is going to be limitations to stores, any physical devices such as undulations, or chicanes, or speed tables. And that's something that Menlo Park indicated that it would not be able to support because it not only slows the trucks down, but you know, more than that, it damages the trucks. And so that's why, and this is not a new, you know, something new from fire departments. This is something that, you know, we've been hitting with the fire departments for 30 million years. So that concludes staff, the staff report, and at this point, we're looking for council direction, or not direction, but seeing if you want to move forward with some traffic calming.
Can I ask, in your staff report, Mike, you indicate in the second paragraph that over the 10-year period between 2002 and 2011, total 50 accidents, all vehicle related, no pedestrian-related accidents.
Correct.
Now, that's just from our records, or is that combined records with the county and Redwood City? Because isn't that intersection multi-jurisdictional?
Yes, it is, but that's per Caltrans. I mean, that, I mean, correct me, I mean, typically on that street, if it's in the county, then it would be CHP that would respond to accidents.
Yeah, that's Kelly. We send our traffic data to the Switters, which is a statewide reporting system, so Caltrans would have access to that too. They probably did a pretty good job of looking at those.
Get all of it. Because I've had residents tell me, that's crazy, you know, because they can remember people being hit, hurt, or even killed at that intersection. I don't know for facts, but-
Pedestrians or-
Pedestrians, yeah.
I talked to a former council member who, when she was on council, which I believe was 2000, so it was prior to this period, there were two elderly people killed crossing that crosswalk. That may well be what people are thinking.
Okay. So it could be prior to the 2002-
I think it was until 2000.
Cut-off phase or something.
You know, and it's not unusual here from residents that, you know, when you give them the traffic accident numbers, or traffic collision numbers, they, they, just they have hard time believing it. But, but the thing is, where these numbers come from is where the police report is filed. So there could be other, you know, collisions or accidents that they hear, but it's not reported, then it gets into this data.
Go ahead.
I have a question. So you stated that Menlo Park would not support speed tables or sounded like some other adjustment to the road surface?
Correct.
Which would be one of the things you would look at if you were looking at speed slowing mechanisms.
It would, it would be one, but that's not all of the things. I mean, what we found is one of the most effective ways of reducing speeds, you know, it's basically, I mean, everyone drives on what they believe, most people drive on what they believe is the safe speed. An effective way of decreasing speed is to visually try to narrow the roadway. And in a lot of areas, you do that with striking. And I think one of the things about Selby, it's really, it looks very different than most streets here in Atherton from the standpoint of there isn't as much of a tree canopy. Also, it's just a straightaway road, and you know, it's wide, but then also there isn't a lot of stuff, you know, on the side of the road. So, you know, that road, more than I think most roads that I've seen here in town, it looks wide and open, which, which, you know, means cars are going to go a little faster.
So are you saying that things might slow down, since that's a school route, if there was a bike path there, and you did something, maybe even made the bike path, I, you know, I haven't even discussed on the bike path. In that area, even painting it green to make it even more visual?
Absolutely.
That could have an impact on the speed.
And Mike, when was the last time we actually did any studies out on Selby, as far as traffic flow and directions and so on?
I am not aware of any. I mean, probably the last time that the county had done any real studies is, you know, because it is posted for a 25 mile an hour speed limit, so probably the last speed survey.
So the volume numbers that we're seeing here, 50 a day, or we just don't know?
And that's why it's part of the, you know, work plans for traffic calming, that's one of the first things we want to do, is go out and get, you know, 24-hour traffic counts and actually get the volume counts, you know, by per hour, so we can see the fluctuations, you know, during, during the day. And then also now, the traffic counters that they have, it's, it also gets the hecler speeds as well.
So being a little familiar with the area, I think that there is some concerns. Cut-through traffic rate, low traffic going towards the county, going just strictly down Selby. If we do a study of Selby, are we going to be targeting through traffic all the way to Selby? Because I'm thinking of the participation factor, if we in fact lean towards a direction towards a signal. We would obviously like to know, you know, because the county has obviously said at this point, we don't want to participate. If in fact, we find that 80% of the traffic is captured through traffic and, you know, the rest is ours, I think that that would bear some influence too on how we move forward.
Yes, however, you know, you really don't know where they're coming from and where they're going necessarily by just traffic counts. You know, I would think that, and one of the things that we want to take a look at, and this would show up, you know, by taking a look at the counts kind of by hour, is that, you know, how many cars are on, going on Selby because of the element of school during the morning, drop off in the afternoon pickups. And, you know, as far as a cut-through, you know, just looking at the map, you know, actually Stockbridge would be a more attractive, you know, why was just cutting through? Stockbridge is more attractive because Stockbridge actually connects Alquimino to Alameda, as opposed to Selby ends, and then it kind of jogs over, and you can, you can get to Alameda, but it's-
Through Colby.
Yeah, but it's not a straight shot.
Right.
So that brings up a question that I have, that we're going to, I know that we've had residents come to council meetings over the years and say, Stockbridge is a, is a raceway, you know, and I know a member of our transportation committee has even had brought, you know, traffic calming brochures and, and suggestions that are, I guess, approved by fire departments for emergency routes. So if we do this study for Selby, wouldn't we want to also do it for Stockbridge? And maybe, I mean, whatever we do for one of these cut-through streets, I mean, there's Selby, there's Stockbridge, there's Almen draw, Tuscaloosa's not desirable because it jogs a lot, and then there's Atherton Avenue. I mean-
You know, I mean, one of the things you want to be careful of when you do the traffic calming study, is that you just, a lot of times you don't want to just do it on one street, because, you know, a lot of times you're not solving the problem, but you might shift it somewhere else. And so what we've learned is that, you know, doing these kind of studies, you really want to take a look at the entire area, how the streets connect it, so that, you know, you really define a larger area, so that you can try to solve for the area. But in this case, you know, with Selby, really there isn't, you know, I do think that we can do a, you know, good study on Selby without really affecting Stockbridge, because there's really not a lot of streets that are, you know, what I'd be looking for, which doesn't, you know, isn't common here, is, you know, when you have more of a gridded street network. Because traffic's like water, it's going to flow, it's going to go where there's least demand. But in this case, you know, when you take a look at Selby, there's only one, two, three streets that actually connect over to another street along that entire stretch. So, you know, that's not to say that, you know-
Mike, if we, I mean, the council hasn't decided what they want to do with signalization, hybrid beacon, no left turn, that sort of thing. If they do any one of those things though, wouldn't that impact some of those adjacent streets?
If they did a hybrid beacon, I don't, I do not believe it's going to affect the rest of the streets. If you do a signal, I think it would definitely not affect it. And to me, it's going to be positive for those other streets.
About a no left turn.
It's going to be negative for Selby, because now Selby's going to be attractive, because now if you want to turn left, want to Alquimino Real, that's the way you're going to go.
That's the truth. I think that's exactly right.
But if you do no left turn?
Well, if you do no left turn, yeah.
But he's saying, coming from the community-
Right.
-out on, going, wanting to go north on Alquimino from that whole community, I have heard a number of comments about how there's no safe left turn right now. And I look at, I look at the report, we have 50 accidents over a 10-year period, that's a problem. I'm very reluctant to do something that's going to create a problem on other, on other parallel streets. So I think that, and if we're going to, but I think we have a problem.
So, can I-
Good.
So the other thing that I think we need to not lose sight of, I think, as far as I'm concerned, ultimate goal would be to reduce the number of lanes on Alquimino and create bike and pedestrian paths on the outside shoulders, like we've discussed with Caltrans a year ago at this time. And they were very open to that. I've talked with Sandy Wong, Executive Director of CKAG, and there is this agreement or MOU that CKAG has with the San Mateo County cities that, she's going to, she couldn't verbalize it to me exactly, she said she was going to send it to me, she has a-
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. We talked about that. And that said that Alquimino would remain a through fare, and we wouldn't be able to do anything with our section of it to say, like what Menlo Park did, reduce the size of the lanes, put a beautiful median in the middle with trees, and, and have the side, outside lanes be designated bike and ped paths, which would reduce the space that people would have to negotiate in crossing over, or even turning left, or turning onto the street, or off of the street, because you wouldn't have so many lanes to negotiate. So-
Well, and actually, I have a copy of that MOU.
Oh, you do?
And I'll be happy to, you know, we'll get copies to you.
Okay, it's not from here, though?
No, it's not.
Okay.
But what it says is that you need to preserve the capacity.
Okay.
That doesn't necessarily mean you can't reduce lanes. You know, because again, and what the, you know, the logic, we've been trying to use with Caltrans is that if it's four lanes leading into Atherton, four lanes leading out of Atherton, then why do you need six lanes in Atherton? So, so by reducing a lane in each direction, you know what, one may argue that you're reducing capacity, but in reality, you're not. All you're doing is you're taking away some parking lot. I mean, if, if you think about it, if, if Alquimino ever got to gridlock, which it may, some may think it is today.
Sure.
All you're doing is, if that's six-lane section in Atherton, you're not, you may be getting to Menlo Park faster.
Sooner, but-
Sooner, but then once you get that four-lane section, you're not going anywhere.
Right.
So, but again, I mean, if you take a look at, you know, it just talks about capacity.
Okay.
That would be the argument that we would be trying to make.
Okay.
It's also really talking about incorporating the capacity issue into the congestion management plan, and this was a con, an agreement and concept between the CKAG Executive Director and Caltrans. We didn't sign it.
Richard Mayier, yeah, at the time.
We are not legally bound to do anything that that document talks about, but for a planning document, it's fine. And as Mike said, you have the hoses, big on one end and big on the other, or little on both ends, and you got the big part in the middle, the water didn't go any better in that middle section.
So the vision, I think, would be, and I've heard council members from Menlo Park talk about how hard it was for them to create the large center, London Plain plantings in the middle of the Alquimino there, but the minute they did that, and kind of reduced the size, the width of the other, the two lanes that are through traffic, and then you have the parking for retail, it slowed traffic down measurably, and their accident rate, their rate of pedestrian fatalities, went way down. And it just, it was a real, you know, silver bullet.
Because they got a light at every block. They essentially have a light at every block, okay?
Well, that's, that is, that is something to think about too, but, yeah.
I think that is.
Yeah.
And the light is important, but also if you have a divider in between that you can stand on-
Right.
It makes it a lot safer for a pedestrian.
I mean, I, the vision-wise, I just think if we could make our stretch of Alquimino more beautiful and less like a six-lane freeway, it would go a long way to calming traffic. That's not Selby Lane discussion, but I, I think it has an impact on the-
So if we could, I guess there's, there's two points that I think we're addressing. One is, the residents talked about the speed, and we said, okay, we are going to do a bike lane study, we're in the middle of doing something. That's a very logical street to do something specifically on that might narrow it, that could have some addressing, you know, I don't know what the statistics are of what that impact is, you know, maybe that would be some good information for that. But then the other issue, we said, hey, you know, if we do something here, it's going to have a trickle-down effect to the other streets, and that's true, although we'll have a diminishing return, because the further and further you get from Woodside Road, you know, it's, let's just say, you know, people are going to stop turning because they have to go, you know, jigsaw puzzle. But for the accidents, the vehicle accidents, you know, and with the side benefit of the, of the pedestrian, okay, the hybrid beacon, you said in your report, isn't going to help the vehicle accidents. You know, the no left turn, we're saying it's going to have an issue, and, you know, but, you know, personally, I'm kind of back to the light issue, is that you put a light there, we can program the light to where it will, obviously we have to support the school traffic, but after the school traffic, we can do some sort of restricting, but, but I really think we're talking about two different things. You know, one is the speed, and, you know, I'd like to know more about the bike, you know, what that impact would be, because that's a very, that was a great point that you made, and I think it will have a, you know, very applicable effect there, but, but I think the other thing was, you know, we talked about beacon light, you know, I'm kind of back at the light stage, but then, then look at how we would, you know, structure the timing of the light, and for that, you know, we want input back from, you know, the transportation committee and the residents there to try and give us some guidance, but then also keep in mind what the school requirements are, so that's kind of my-
I think that, in what Bill was saying, because I think that the light discussion's kind of premature at this point, until we find out what the flows and so on and so forth. I'm sitting on Selby. I kind of want to know how serious our issue is and what our flows are, and if, you know, if we could get a better, I'm not interested in increasing flows whatsoever. I'm not interested in making traffic flow, frankly, better for people's lives in town. So slowing them down is, is option A. And I think most of the residents would say the same thing, is please don't bring any more cars over here. But I think our foundation of how we should make our decisions is frankly to figure out with the information that you're providing, giving us a better, you know, idea of what our problem really is than, you know, what we've heard. You know, I think that our information's pretty old, and I know that we have a lot of streets in town that have a lot more flow than 1,500 cars per unit, per day. So, you know, I think that that's kind of where I'm sitting.
So can, can I, oh, you go, Rip, can I go? Okay. So thinking about Selby Lane and the idea of the painted green bike path and narrowing the, you know, lanes, one of the things about bike paths is that even with this, this painted green, it's not, it gives you an element of feeling that you're safe in it, but cars can still go over. And if, if there really is that much width, extra width on Selby Lane, I mean, it's going to cost a fortune, I know, but what if you created a barrier with a row of trees, and you know, or plantings between the, the cars and the bike path on the side, either side? Because that way you're narrowing the, the street, and you're creating a tree canopy, which it doesn't have, and then providing some safety for the bike paths. I don't know if there's room for that or not.
Well, I don't know if there, without really looking into it, I don't really, but the actual width of the pavement is only 24 feet, which isn't why.
Oh.
What, what, what makes it why is that-
Oh, you had it here, 24 feet.
Yeah, there's just, you know, between the edge of pavement and where the private properties are, it just, it's nicely clear, nicely clear.
So the private property owners haven't done any encroachments upon it?
Yes.
But isn't that right away the towns?
Yes.
Anyway?
Yes.
So, I mean, couldn't we expand that for a bike path and plant along the edge of the street?
We could, but I, you know, I'm not sure of planting the-
Trees.
Planting carries its own huge list of problems.
I know, I know.
You know, Menlo Park did something like that on Oak Grove, remember? And they put all those bulbs in there and all that stuff, and they, within six months, they ripped it all out.
Yeah.
So, you know, but-
Something.
I would like to know more, because I, you know, we talked about the bike path thing. If there's some, maybe Casey can give us some, what is the real impact? You know, is there a real impact? And Chief, you know, I'd love to hear any way in that we could get, you know, from, from your side of the houses, when you put a bike path on there, and you have a visual, the road looks narrower, I mean, what is the real effect there? And I agree with, you know, Elizabeth, that if people want to speed, they're going to speed, and if there's nobody there, they're going to do what they want, but I would like to have, you know, a little more feeling for, you know, what that real impact is, because that could be, you know, that's important.
That'd be part of our traffic study?
Yeah, that would come back as part of the, the study, what the impact of changes on the street would be. Yeah. Mike's basic premise is correct, that's, you know, worked with a lot of guys like Mike over the years, and I know just for myself, when I go into that area where the walls come in or the lines come in, it just automatically slows down, I think it's an actual reaction. What I always caution people, and I had this conversation with Caltrans when I met with them, we, we certainly, we throw around adjectives like, oh, that's a terrible intersection, because there was 50 collisions over a 10-year period. Well, what is that, 2.4 a month, if my math is right? Based on the, the amount of traffic we get on east, you know, Selby Lane, ECR, is that out of the ordinary, you know, is, is that really extraordinary? I talked to one of the chiefs of ECR, they had, two months ago, at that point, they had already had seven fatalities on ECR in their city. So they think that they got a real problem too, and they're, and they're dealing with it. But I, I think it would be interesting too, and maybe Caltrans did, Mike, to know exactly what those, what the primary collision factor was of those 50 collisions. Because I tell you, just since I've been here, I know of two, including the fatality we had out there, there's no amount of traffic control would have stopped a guy from doing 75 miles an hour that might have been intoxicated, mugged up of it. So how do you-
To balance.
Yeah, I mean, we need to know, there's two issues here as I see it. There's the speed on Selby, and then there's the left turn of, of eastbound Selby on, to toward ECR, correct? And those are the two things I think that this group has to grapple with, has to-
And the cut-through on Oak Grove.
Yes, you're correct.
To try to get away from having to do things like you.
You know, and-
Yeah, I think those are the two issues, and I think they're related with Selby. I, I kind of came around from the last meeting to the same place Bill did, which is starting to feel like, you know, once every two or so months, it, I mean, it, it's a problem. Selby's one of our more problematic corners, and probably the signal's the right way to go. The, the traffic beacon's not going to do anything for it. If, if we could show that there was a need for the traffic beacon to the school, I, I mean, there's a cost benefit to the traffic beacon, which is, it doesn't cost us anything. But that's not a reason to do it rather than a signal. I, I think what's before us today is if we want to have to do a 15,000 to $20,000 traffic study on Selby and maybe on some of the other parallel streets. And I guess if I'm thinking that we're feeling more open to the idea of a signal, which, which I am feeling, I'd like to have a study before we do it. I'd like to know the traffic on Selby Lane before we do it, because I am concerned, I mean, it may be a benefit, but it may be a detriment. I, I heard from the residents at the last meeting, and I think we had seven people who were opposed to the idea of a signal, and two people that were in favor of it. I don't know if that's representative of the whole community. The traffic study would do outreach to the community, which I think would be a real benefit. And would give us a much better sense of how the whole community there feels, and I, it's not, I think of, of the folks that were opposed to the signal, everybody lived on Selby Lane. And we really have to look, not just at who lives on Selby Lane, we have to look at the people that live in that whole area between Atherton Avenue and Selby Lane. I, I guess I do think there would be probably some increased traffic coming from some of the cross-streets to Selby Lane, because it will be safer to go north on Alquimino if there's a signal there. I think that is really a separate issue from slowing traffic on Selby Lane, and I'm concerned about the fire department position, because the concept of the tables was sort of, the, the idea that I had thought would be most effective, but if, if they are going to attempt to kill that and have the ability to do so, then, you know, I, I, I wonder if it's economically prudent to go forward and spend money on a study. But I would like to have the data, I, but, so I'm just weighing the issues here. I would like to have the data before we really move forward on, on a traffic signal concept, and I think that it would be valuable to get the outreach from the community. So I guess I'm sort of leaning in favor of that. So I guess I'm sort of leaning in favor of doing that.
And, and you know, as far as the fire department, I mean, they do have traffic tables that the fire department probably would be agreeable to, because now they act, and really what it is, is tables that are not continuous. There's basically openings that are the proper width, so a fire truck could just go right through them without having to slow down. But, but the, you know, I also want to share with you that, you know, speed tables, undulations, the humps. You know, personally, I don't think that there's, you could put them in. What we know is, it's going to be, it's not going to be cheap. What we know is, is wherever you put them, whatever house you put them in front of, they're not going to like them. And what we know is, is that they're going to slow down traffic at those humps. It could speed up traffic in between, okay? So, so I personally am not a fan of, of those humps, and having dealt with a lot of communities and streets, you know, where you're always fighting the battle of, we want them, but, oh, you want it, you want to put it there, no, past my house, we don't. So there's, there's those issues. But you are actually correct that as far as the, the accident, you know, history at Selby and ECR, and the speeds on Selby, they're two different issues. I guess one of the concerns that I would have is I do think that, I mean, if we signalize that intersection, residents on Selby are, I mean, they're, they're going to see more traffic. And, you know, and I'm just kind of thinking out loud here, is that, you know, there may be kind of an intermediate step here. Because, you know, the chief asked about the primary collision factors. Well, twenty-five, half of the accidents were cars being broadsided. And having been out there myself and kind of observing what, what I believe the issue is, is that cars turning left can't see. Because you have another, you could have another car in the opposite direction turning left, and it's offset from you. And then you have these wide, heavily vegetated medias on both sides that you can't see down traffic. And you have, so, you know, I think what's happening is people at some point, they get impatient, and they, they turn left and they get broadsided. So from pure engineering, so this is pure engineering, not considering if people like the, you know, the masketed medias and all that. A way to, but what we're, you know, what you can do is try to improve visibility. Well, how do you improve visibility? Well, one way to do it is to remove a lot of that vegetation. Another way to do it is for, for cars that are turning left, instead of having them offset, have them line up together, so that if I'm turning left, now you don't have to look to see around a car. And the way you do that is through utilization of not left turn lanes, but two-way left turn lanes. And you've all seen these, I think. And, and so that also kind of opens up the area. And then the other thing to, to improve safety there would be to, again, we talked about, is to reduce the lanes from six to four, because now...
That'd be, I think everybody agrees with that.
Yeah. And again, this, you know, what I'm talking about here has not been discussed with Caltrans, so I don't know if this is anything that they would, but, but again, if you just think about why these accidents happen, I think it's happening because of poor visibility. So how do you, you know, so one way to solve it is to put in a signal where visibility is not an issue anymore, because now you have red and green lights to tell you when you can turn. Or there's another way of improving visibility, which is what I just kind of went over. But, but again, that has impacts, because, you know, you're going to be removing a very mature, you know, landscaped median.
Those are all oleanders and shrubs and, you know, they're not trees. There's not a lot of trees. They're like fronds.
Bushes.
Yeah, bushes. So you remove those and planted trees that would not create the...
Well, the only reason I bring it up, because, I mean, to me, to me, that may be an intermediate step before you, before you leap to a, a signal where I do is going to have negative impacts for people on that street. But I also believe that that's going to, that's going to help with the safety issue.
How long do you think it could be, it would take us to get Caltrans to reduce the number of lanes?
Well, this is, you know, if we get them to think this is an important project, maybe ten years.
I know we've done nothing for the last year. We've done nothing for the last year. I was very encouraged.
I, I, I don't know. You know, because we haven't had, we have, I have not had these kind of discussions with Caltrans to see how they deal with it.
The one way to speed that up though is for us to put money toward things, and that's...
Well, you know, and I think Caltrans, I mean, one of the things, at least my dealings with them here in District Four, is that they are very, very sensitive about what the communities, you know, feel. Because they know that Alcamino Real, there's, it's kind of the main street for basically all the community, all the peninsula cities. You know, so I, I think if we were to say to them, hey, how about installing two-way left turns and getting rid of some of this vegetation? My guess is the response would be, well, how does the city feel about it? And in this case, how would Grand Rapids city feel about it? How would San Mateo County feel about it? Because they're all kind of, you know, we're all in that area.
I think in a general consensus, you know, we'd like to start that ten-year clock. Two years ago, we spoke about it two years ago, and so forth. So I think that, you know, in general, we really like that concept and that clock already started, knowing that that would be our ultimate goal. We obviously want to reduce, you know, any, using another method to reduce accidents in our community, clearly. But, you know, that reduction of the number of lanes would be a huge impact. It would probably go right with our bicycle safety factor and pedestrian crossings. And make, we'd make better decisions all the way down Alcamino, if we knew we had two lanes in each direction, so.
So what, I mean, that's, so that's a question, George, for you and for Mike, about what can we as the council do to move forward? I mean, we've talked about this issue of reducing the width of Alcamino now for some time, in, in a few different contexts. But I think it's been consistent and unanimous that it's something that we would like to do. What can we do to move that forward?
We can start those conversations with Caltrans.
Yeah, well...
Certainly, right.
Well, and I think what moves it forward is basically, in, you know, the Caltrans world, the first thing they're going to want to do is what they call the Project Study Board. And if, if the town were willing to, you know, work with Caltrans to define the scope, but if the town pays...